Call me in order, please rise or please leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Play ball. Did I see Bill Rose come in? I thought I did. You are, sir, on next. The invocation will begin by Bill Rose from the Oasis Church, going to tell us a little bit about the new church, you're fairly new, and right over there you are.
Right over here. Face the camera.
And you can wave, may not wave. So talk to us.
Well, I'm a little late, but I brought God with me, so, um, thank you for your patience, I appreciate you guys.
No problem.
So we started Oasis in January at Holly Grove Middle School, actually January of last year. Everything's going really well, very excited. I think it's, it's safe to say we're here for good, so, um, the church is stable, self-supporting, and everything's going very well, so.
And community-oriented, right?
Yeah, very much so. And I'm breathing heavily because I ran from the parking lot all the way in here so I can be here with you guys, so, thank you so much.
Want to take a break?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
All right, go for it.
So, Father, we're thankful that we can come together. I thank you for the great men and women who lead our town and are committed to serving the people here as well as serving you. Father, I invite you to be with us as we make decisions and talk through policies and procedures. I pray for clarity and guidance and wisdom. First, in your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bill, appreciate it.
Thank you so very much.
I remember for adjustment approval, the May fifteenth, or May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting agenda, Mayor Portem. Almost Mayor Portem. There you go.
Motion to adopt the May nineteenth, two thousand and fifteen meeting agenda with the change to six M contract change order to TA Loving for NMAC project, and six D resolution fifteen dash twenty-one calling for change in the North Carolina certificate of need being removed.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. I'm number five, public comment period. We have one signed up. Edgar, would you come forward, introduce yourself and your address, and then go for it?
Good evening, my name is Edgar Garito, and I reside at fifty twelve Oakmont Court. I'm here to speak to you as a resident and also as an active member of the Holly Springs Run Club. And I want to talk tonight about a campaign that we would like to be brought to our town and to see where we can go from here. The name of the campaign is the Watch For Me NC Campaign. This campaign is aimed at reducing the number of pedestrian and bicyclists hit and injured in crashes with vehicles. The program involves two key elements. One, safety and educational messages directed towards drivers, pedestrians, and bicyclists, such as posters, bumper stickers, pamphlets. And number two, enforcement efforts by area police to crack down on some of the violations of traffic safety laws. The Watch For Me NC program was started in two thousand and twelve, and each year invites communities across North Carolina to become partner communities. As part of that effort, partner communities receive additional support and training from NC DOT. Still, even if a community is not yet a partner, all North Carolina communities are encouraged to use the Watch For Me NC campaign materials to improve pedestrian, pedestrian and bicycle safety in their communities. Now, unfortunately, we just missed the cutoff date to apply to become a partner this year. However, as I mentioned, we are able to duplicate all of their materials at this time. We are then asking to see if the town of Holly Springs is able to work together with us, the Holly Springs Run Club, in becoming partners and in order to be able to start this program, disseminate the information, and start educating our town. And when applications open up again next year, for the town to be able to apply with the hope to become permanent partners in the campaign. Now, a few weeks ago, we suffered a horrible tragedy which involved a pedestrian and a crosswalk. I am firm believer that the best way to avoid tragedies is by education. The Watch For Me NC campaign is a unique resource for the community as it helps in making measurable improvement to pedestrian and bicycle safety. As Holly Springs continues to grow, and also wanted to still keep the small-town feel, we will also have more people walking and riding. Let's prevent another tragedy. And as the mayor says, if it's good for the kids, it's good for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Have I heard that before somewhere? I talked to Edgar beforehand, he's going to get back to me in the next few days, we're going to talk about this and see what we can do together. But thank you for doing this.
Can I, can I piggyback off of this?
Of course.
Edgar and I had gotten together at one of the local establishments in town Thursday of last week, when the Holly Springs Run Club-
Library.
-had finished running.
Was this at library?
Yes, it was at library, absolutely. And, you know, the conversation quickly turned to safety, and it just seems like it would be a good opportunity to piggyback on existing programs that are available with what we've been, you've been, you know, champion-
Almost a year.
You know, in terms of crosswalk safety. So the more resources we can put towards something, hopefully the better results.
Sure.
And we may not hopefully have another tragedy, you know, like we had in recent memory.
I got you.
Thank you.
Could you just repeat the, you had about three or four attributes of the program. Could you just repeat those for me again, please?
Well, um, you're talking about what the campaign involves, the key elements.
Yes.
It's, um, safety and educational messages directly to drivers, pedestrian, bicyclists, because everybody plays a role in this matter. And the second part, it's an enforcement effort by the police to crack down on some of the violations of traffic safety laws. One thing I didn't mention is that this program was created by the NC DOT in conjunction with UNC as well. So, one of the things, once you become a partner, they will provide training for law enforcement officers, and that is free as well.
If I might ask also, you said we missed the, the opportunity to sign up. Is there an open season, or what is-
Yes.
Is there an application time?
They actually open up late January, so January will be the open application process. And also, most of this campaign, they focus in October, at the fall. There's a lot of things that happen during that time. There's the hour change, we get darker earlier, but, um, I believe this is something we should do year-round, not just wait until October.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Look forward to talking to you.
Thanks, Edgar.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's a good thing you go to the library often.
It is.
He reads a lot of books.
I was trying to better myself.
Agenda IM six A consent agenda, Mayor Portem.
Motion to adopt the consent agenda with the change that was made.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed unanimously. I think we should go right to, let's go to six D consent agenda that's been pulled off, hospital certificates of need, and who wants to tackle this? You want to tackle this, Hank first?
Well, I just, I wanted that to be removed so we could place a, an individual vote on that.
Sure.
Because I feel it's, these bills are very important, they're going to be very, very important to our hospitals here. I think a certi- certificate of need has the potential to eliminate some of the services that we could potentially offer at the Holly Springs Hospital. Personally, I think the market needs to drive the medical services that a hospital does, so I just wanted us to vote on this separately outside of the consent agenda.
There are two bills, House Bill two hundred and Senate Bill seven oh two. House Bill two hundred, Maria Avila, which we worked with for a year on this subject, I have a passion against the con hearing, I call it. She has tweaked the con hearing to a point, and it's good. So that's House Bill two hundred. But Senate Bill seven oh two is Tom Apabaka, I can never say his name, help me.
Apadaka.
Apadaka. And he is, on the Senate bill, they want to eliminate the certificate of need, period, the whole thing. And about half the states in this country have already done that. It cost this town, in my opinion, and some facts to back it up, about ten long years of, as one attorney in the legislature said, "It just made the attorneys rich." So I'm against it. So that's kind of where we are, on my standpoint. Tim?
Um, I'm sort of passionate on this, this subject. We've taken part here in Holly Springs for over ten years now with a chronic need for a hospital in this town. We had a chance a number of years ago when Novant came to town and said they were willing to spend a hundred million dollars, build a hundred-bed hospital in town. They came before the, the certificate of need. We had almost ten thousand people give input into the process, saying what their need was and that it's chronic. We lost out in that bid for a hospital. At that time, Wake Med got a fifty-bed women's hospital, that was fifty beds given to them, and that hospital just opened up in North Raleigh.
Raleigh, yeah.
We tried again at the certificate of need hearings. Many of us went before them and talked about the need that we have here. It has not gotten any less of a need. The process that it goes through, and the time it takes to make the selections, and the appeals, and everything else, Rex Hospital has been very supportive of us in this latest attempt, and finally, after an appeal, got the certificate of need, January of two thousand and fourteen, to build a fifty-bed hospital. This is still, two thousand and fourteen, that's seven years after we had a chance to have a hospital before. The process still continues. Rex Hospital now has the certificate of need for a fifty-bed hospital. That's January of fourteen, we're still waiting for progress on that to come. The people's need has not changed, the process has, I think, bogged it down, and one of the things that really irks me is that, once the certificate is issued to the holder, they have that, and there seems to be no recourse as far as the town to get them to act. I mean, we've heard things that, well, we're not going to build a hospital now because we have, we had money issues with another part, the Hart Tower downtown.
Downtown.
They've gone under the UNC system, there's more bureaucracy involved in getting things approved, and we also want to build another wing onto the urgent care that we have here before we build the hospital. Each of those moves, while they have that certificate that says they're going to build a hospital, puts them off year after year after year, and we have no recourse into that. There's nothing we can do to force them at this time to build that hospital, which makes me mad. If you have a, an entity that says, whatever the group is, Wake Med, Novant, or Rex, that says, "I've got the money, there's a need, I'm going to build it," and they don't have to go through this process, I think we can get things done a lot faster without, and the marketplace is what's going to determine it, like Councilman Dixon said. The other thing is, we have another certificate of need that was granted to Holly Springs, to Novant, for three operating rooms. Have you seen those operating rooms? That certificate is being held by another entity, and still no progress on that. That's three operating rooms that we could have here in Holly Springs, that we have no way of forcing them to build that. Whereas a private, or another entity could come in and say, "We want to build the three operating rooms, we have the money, we can do it, let's do it." But right now, we're, we have no way of forcing Novant or even Rex to build what they've been given the certificate for. So this certificate of need really is, uh, sounds like a bureaucratic way of stifling the, the, the economy as far as getting competition or anything else done. So, me, I'm afraid of, favor of either one of the bills being passed to look at the certificate of need process and either amending it or doing away with it, starting something, let the marketplace settle these things. And that's my two cents.
And it's really not just hospitals, it's like if a, if a hospital or even a, a health center wants to add a piece of machinery, they've got to go through this, jump through these hoops.
Linear accelerator.
So if you don't, if you say, "Well, I never go to the hospital, it doesn't really impact me," just going to the doctor could impact you.
Sure.
And it could impact your ability to get an appointment for that. You might have to put something off for a week, or two weeks, or whatever it might be, just to, just because that, the state has limited the number of machines, because they feel that, well, they feel that another machine is not necessary in this particular area.
Or for a particular facility, because they, as we've discussed before, the con was originally brought about to help keep one facility or one hospital system or medical system, healthcare, from monopolizing an area. And that's just not a, the building or the beds, like you say, that's the equipment, you know, it's, and it's backfiring. It's, uh-
Quite the opposite, right?
Right. I've seen, from working in the health field for over a decade, I've seen a lot of surprises where I thought for sure, you know, certain places wouldn't be awarded the, the beds or this or that, and they were, not following what the con really is for. So, I'm with you all that I believe that something has to be done.
Jim, any comments?
Last but not least, and-
Last but certainly not least.
And wrap it up, so to speak.
Wrap it up.
You know, it's, the goal of the, what we'd like to do here in Holly Springs is provide medical services, the availability of medical services and facilities to the citizens at reasonable cost. The con hearings have long outlived their purpose. And whether it is House Bill two hundred or Senate Bill seven oh two, each one addressing the changes in the con hearing, one modifying, one eliminating, whichever one is, is finally pushed through, it is a benefit to us that it be gone or it be changed, because the citizens need to have access to reasonable and adequate and sufficient healthcare.
And a timely manner.
Any timely manner, yeah. One final comment, I, I've argued this point for almost ten years, and here's the answer that I've gotten from certain people who support the con hearing. Well, if we have this in place, what it eliminates is a possibility of a hospital coming into Holly Springs, then two or three more coming in right afterwards. Think about that one for a minute.
How we become a hospital.
So I think, I think, I think we're-
Become a medical center.
I think, yeah, I think we have consensus here, but let's, let's, let's vote on a-
I had asked our town clerk to add a few things regarding what I just said about the certificate of need as it sits right now to our resolution.
Sure.
Are those the ones in bold?
Yes, yes.
Three-star dash.
If that's all right with everybody.
Let's just do it on the screen, sure.
It's fine.
Or you can read some of it, whatever you want to do. But I think we're all together on this.
Would think so.
So someone make a motion to probably endorse the resolution as amended? That sound right?
I'll make, I'll make the motion to endorse the resolution as amended.
Second. Motion made in second, all favor.
Aye.
Opposed. And let the record show, that was a unanimous vote. Thank you.
Nice job.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen?
Yes. All right. Agenda IM seven A, under new business, the Urban Chickens Ordinance, and Councilman Dixon.
Yes.
You are on, sir.
Yes, thank you. While, while on the, the road to try to get this position I'm in here now, I heard from probably, I don't know, four, five, or six different folks who were interested in, and they'd asked me my position on, on, you know, urban, urban chickens, you know, for the purpose of, you know, eggs.
Right.
And, you know, years ago, I guess a few years ago, was it in twenty-ten, I believe it was?
Twenty-ten.
It came before the council, when I was not on here, and, you know, I don't know, I was skeptical at the time, and, but didn't really look into it all that much. But when some folks brought it to my attention while campaigning, I did decide to take a look at it, and I, and I did assure them that I would look into it more if, if I got this position. So I had been, I'd look into it, give it a rest, go look into it, so it sort of went back and forth till I felt comfortable with the information that I had. And what I have presented in here is a dra- I wouldn't even call it a draft ordinance, I would just call it a draft at this point, because it's not even really an ordinance.
We're not voting, yeah.
And, and I really don't expect us to vote tonight.
Correct.
It's really more of a, of a discussion, but what I did is, I did take a look at, I went online just to figure out what towns and offered this sort of, or allowed-
Allowed chickens, yeah.
For a purpose of egg gathering. And when I found out that Cary allowed it.
They do.
You know, and in many, in many respects, they're incredibly restrictive with virtually everything. I decided to take a look at their, their, their ordinance, and I also looked at Raleigh, because I know that they have a, something called Tour de Coupe every year, where they, they allow that backyard chickens as well. So I took a look, I plagiarized a little bit, tweaked it a little bit, and then, you know, I wanted to share with everyone here a proposal for some rules if we were to allow backyard chickens.
Right.
And it's relatively restrictive as compared to a lot of other municipalities in Lake County. Councilman Cobb just showed me a listing of all the municipalities in Lake County, and I believe every one of them with the exception of Holly Springs and Fuquay, am I not correct? Allow, allow them, and I know that-
And Fuquay.
And I know Fuquay is considering it now.
And Fuquay, yeah, Fuquay's doing it now.
And my, my proposal for discussion would be very, very limited. It would, I believe, be-
Two hens.
Be two hens, no roosters.
Eight thousand square feet.
R-ten, yeah, R-ten, you know, eight thousand square feet, and that's, and I, and I don't remember where I got this from, because I developed this a while ago and just tweaked it now.
R-ten is ten thousand square feet, so you're talking about R-eight?
R-eight, well, no, actually-
With setbacks?
Actually, R-ten, but with incentives, which is, would make it, allow it less. But again, I'm not married to anything, it's more of a, more of a discussion point, and then-
What size lot is that?
R-ten.
What is ten thousand square feet, as far as acreage?
Say again.
I think that's like a quarter.
Quarter acre, right?
An acre is forty-three thousand five hundred and sixty square feet, so it's slightly less than a quarter, like two-two, point two-two, something like that.
Uh, there's some setbacks that I'm considering, you know, I've, I've put on here, the location can't be on the side of the house, in the front of the house, it needs to be behind the, the setback of the house. And, and the coop, you know, the chickens can't run all around the backyard, they, they need to be enclosed in a coop, in, in a coop, which is relatively small, and I, and I got those sizes from something that I had found online. Three feet wide, four feet long, and four feet high, so it's really, really small. And again, people are, if people are concerned about, you know, noise and nuisance, you know, probably dogs are probably ten times louder than, than a chicken would be. So I got, wanted to put it out there for, for discussion, for consideration, and I believe staff also wants to take a closer look at this as well. So that's kind of where we are.
Okay. Comments? I think we all got a few.
Counselor, what is our present status regarding chickens?
Dogs and cats are allowed.
Okay.
And fish, birds, inside the house, but it's, the town code treats misfarmed animals, and they're prohibited in residential areas.
I've, you know, I'm on the record, the last time this came up, I was being against it. One is the, the eight thousand square feet puts it almost in every, any yard in Holly Springs. Most of the things that we hear about is people don't want it because the, the nuisance value of it, it's something that comes and goes in fads, people get disinterested, they, you know, let it go, picking up after runoff, things like that, things that you just don't think about in a, in an urban, basically an urban area that we have right here. Our, our town has grown up to be quite a substantial, nice town, and I just don't think that this is going to lead to maintaining that type of image that we have here. I just, there's so many different things, I've gotten so many emails about this since it's been brought up and put on the agenda, that are against it, don't want it in their neighborhoods. One of the other things is that's, a lot of the areas, their covenants do not allow this, with the homeowners association.
Home Association.
Sunset Ridge, I don't know about, I'm trying, there was a couple other-
Holly Glen.
Holly Glen doesn't allow them, but there's-
Winter Point doesn't allow it.
Winter Point does not, yeah.
It's, right now, there is, there isn't a problem, and I don't think we need to create more work for everybody, whether it be looking at runoff from chicken poop, or birds getting out, or the attraction of foxes and other animals to the proclivity, the presence of the chickens there for food for them. I just, I'm still on the record as leaving our ordinance the way it is and not allowing them.
Okay. Sherry, comments?
I've always just, I really haven't felt strongly either way, so I contacted a few friends in other towns that have chickens. One lives in Raleigh, not far from Crabtree Mall, there, it's a beautiful neighborhood, homes range from four hundred thousand to seven hundred thousand, it's an R-four. And I called her and expected her to just give me glowing reports about it, "It's wonderful, it's wonderful," and she was brutally honest. She said, "It is great to have fresh eggs." And then she said, "If you are not a responsible homeowner, if you do not, if you are not someone who's going to clean that coop constantly and repair the coop and maintain, it's not going to work. It's, it's an ongoing basis." They had a, they went to Australia for a month, last month, and had to hire somebody to come in every day to check on the chickens, so, or the hens, so, but she says it is, it's something they want to do, they keep them, but it is, it's in a, in a very busy urban part of Raleigh. So there, you know, it does come back to the homeowner, the person who's going to take care of the chickens, and, and, you know, as Tim mentioned, getting, you know, the extra resources that would be needed to keep an eye on this, to make, to govern this and make sure that things are following the lot would be, would be, could be a problem.
Jim?
Back in April of two thousand and ten, when we considered this before-
We did.
My sentiment was one acre lot minimum, and, you know, since then, I've, a lot of municipalities have changed and added ordinances that allow backyard hens in terms of Cary, and Raleigh being literally the most liberal with, you can have one hen per every thousand square feet, period. So an acre lot, you can have forty-three chickens in your backyard, which I found that to be quite ridiculous and everything. I do think it's something, though, that we need to, we do need to visit. I think that Hank and I have, have traded some conversations about this, you know, what he's proposed and everything, and this, you know, I'm thinking, you know, my thoughts were with the setbacks, and I actually wanted to increase the setbacks to even further limit the ability, you know, where that, the coop could be in the backyard from his proposal at twelve feet, and I was looking at more fifteen feet, which tend to be the norms if you look at the other ordinances of the, the other municipalities. Looking at that, looking at, making sure that the nuisance, our nuisance requirement, section seven that he has in here, is a little more flexible in terms of allowing written complaints from not just the immediate neighbors, but from others within two hundred feet, so covering more than just the adjacent neighbors, lacking visibility, can't be visible from the street. I could see going to, you know, coming off of the, the one acre. As Tim said, a lot of the HOAs are not going to allow it in the first place, so it may be more of a mute point in terms of the fact that we may have an ordinance that allows you to have two chickens in your backyard, but if you live in an HOA governed subdivision, it ain't going to- ain't going to happen.
Unless they change theirs.
Unless they change theirs.
Exactly, yeah.
So, it's something that I think that, I think it does merit some additional study, I don't think it should just be arbitrarily just killed, but I think it needs to be looked at and, and studied, particularly in light of the fact that there's only two municipalities in the county, us and Fuquay, and Fuquay's looking at changing their ordinance that.
I would, I would like to get some feedback.
That's my thoughts.
As far as, you know, what's been the experience in Cary or Raleigh and others as far as enforcement, and the negative side of this, that they've experienced since they passed it, so.
Last night, we met in Wake Forest, and all the mayors were there except, except Raleigh and Cary. But I have talked, I've talked to Cary, and the comment there was, well, if we had it to do over again, I don't know. It was kind of like one of those in-betweeners. Raleigh, of course, is for this, and there's certain areas in Raleigh in particular that really take advantage of it. I was not for it in the first place, I don't think I'm for it now, but I'm willing to negotiate more, and that's what we're talking about tonight.
Yeah, it's been five years, willing to look at it.
Yeah, exactly.
Take, you know, look at it again and see how things, and I too have gotten emails.
Here's the list of emails I've gotten so far, and they're all negative, saying, don't do it. So, we take that in consideration, but that may not be the way the end result comes by.
Just taking merits.
Agreed.
Merits, merits for the study and evaluation, and it's something that.
That's fair.
We may ultimately come up with something that's reasonable and doable, but it's, there's some input that's got to be gathered.
Got it. Anything else?
Yeah, like I said, I just wanted to put it out on the table.
I think, I appreciate that.
And for discussion, and some is something I promised to do, and.
I think I was with you when you made a couple of those promises.
I think I was, too.
I think you were, too, Jimmy. The three of us campaigned together, that was a whole other story to treat. Anyway, we'll put it back on the agenda, Joni, and next one, or one after, or what? What do you think?
Well, we have the budget coming up, let's not interfere with that.
Let's give it up, a month or so, and come up.
All right.
Next fiscal year.
In July, maybe.
Chuck, do you have any comments, or John, or anybody?
Well, we've made, you made reference, or reference was made to studying the issue, and we will contact some of our neighboring municipalities and find out what.
More specific.
Issues they may be having with enforcement, try to get, get a better feel for that issue, I don't know that, you know, it may not be a problem, it could be. At least we'll have a more complete picture of the issue, and we'll try to have that, or share that, when the issue comes back up. Is there anything specifically that you would like for us to look into, other than contacting some of these other municipalities and ask them about their experiences with this policy?
I think, along that lines, one of the things that we're always worried about here, and it's affected our streams and the runoff, the runoff that, from animal waste is always a big problem as far as our streams is concerned, and this is a highly concentrated discharge that the chickens make, and to get that into runoff, into the yard, and into our little streams that we have here, I'd just like to know if they've done any looking at problems that they've had with the people that do have these chicken coops, and if there's been any problem there.
Okay. I'll help you with that, too. We'll talk some of the mayors again.
And the cost to enforce, to enforce the regulations.
Yeah, all that stuff.
And if you make note of, basically, the number of chickens and the size of the coop.
Yes.
Because if they might look at it from their perspective, you know, like Raleigh or Cary or wherever, you know, they might allow eight chickens with a really large coop. This proposal has maximum of two, and the footprint of the coop is twelve square feet.
Got you. All right.
Okay.
Good enough. Jen, I am seven to be in our new business, fifteen, DP, oh-one, Eagles at South Park Village Appeal. Gina, Gina Clapp. Good evening.
So, tonight is the first time we've had a director appeal come before the town council. Several years ago, the town council amended the Unified Development Ordinance or zoning regulations to give the Director of Planning and Zoning the authority to approve new development plans for projects that are twenty thousand square feet or less in square foot area. And, basically, part of the organization when we set that up was that if there was something that was not in conformance with our ordinances, or the engineering, design and construction standards that are part of the traditional development plan review process, or if there just wasn't something right, that we would not approve that project, and then the applicants have thirty days to appeal our decision to the town council at a public meeting. There's no public hearing required for these types of appeals. And this way, it's a mechanism to get it from a staff review to a town council decision, so this doesn't also, does not go to the planning board also, either. So, anyways, we are currently reviewing and have been reviewing a proposed gas station, Eagles Gas Station, in the South Park Village Integrated Shopping Center. And this will be located on Lot Number Nine, which is directly west of the New Dairy Queen, and it would be a gas station as well as a car wash facility. Both of those uses are considered primary uses in the CB, Community Business Zoning District where it's at, so the use of that property is not a question or an issue as far as zoning goes. As we do with all of our projects and plans, when we received this site plan, we did post it to the town's webpage, what's coming to town webpage, there was some activity on the town's Facebook page as a result, questioning why would the town allow another gas station, specifically an Eagles gas station, when there's one right next door at Walmart, Sheets is coming in down the street, but as we typically let people know, it's a market decision that the property owner needs to make that decision whether or not they want to locate there. But then we also forwarded this plan to the town council, as a result of some concerns that staff has had in regards to the appearance and the uses that are locating at the South Park Village Shopping Center, not being in conformance with the approved design guidelines. And included in your packet, we did include the latest version of the design guidelines, and these were part of the original master plan that was submitted to the town, approved by the town council, that all projects need to comply with. And so, after we did send that out to the town council, there was some concern addressed regarding to the site and the design, and the conformance with those guidelines. And so, specifically, what we were here today to discuss, and what the appeal is, was that staff did not approve the site plan as it was submitted, and there's two areas of why it was denied. First is the site plan conformance with those design guidelines, and second was a series of elevation waivers from the architectural requirements for the required glazing. And so, I'll go through all of this with you. And so, in the South Park Village Design Guidelines, it has some very specific language in regards to the requirements to create human scale, as well as to create a sense of place, and I'm going to read from their Design Guideline book. And so, for human scale, it says, "Human scale is the proportional relationship of buildings and spaces to people. When components in the built environment are ordered in such a way that people feel comfortable, then human scale has most likely been used. In contrast, a place that is out of human scale, either too small or too large, will tend to make people feel uncomfortable. The reaction is to avoid such a place or to move through it quickly." And then, right below that, is their description of a sense of place that their, each site is to comply with. "A sense of place creates an image that remains in your mind when you leave that area. It also can be a mosaic of details that creates a fine-grained streetscape." And so, with that, where we were concerned with that is specifically on the site plan, this is the Village Walk Drive, and it's one-way, heading westbound, and you have the center green through here, and then the second drive is just off this page, you have the Dairy, New Dairy Queen, right here. And along the Village Walk, on-street parking area, this speckled area right along here is the sidewalk component where the pedestrians will be traveling through the site, and this area of South Park Village is supposed to be the most pedestrian-oriented part of South Park Village. And so, the area that we were most concerned in is through here, where this is the car wash, and this is the convenience store, and this is the driveway access leading into the car wash, and then cars would exit out this way. Specifically, when you look at the site plan that was submitted for official action after several reviews, the applicants, right here is the driveway curb, this here is the sidewalk, there was only two feet provided between the sidewalk and the car wash access drive. It would be very uncomfortable for adjacent pedestrians. We'd really have some feeling that the cars potentially could jump that curb and come into the sidewalk area. The landscaping that they were showing as well was within that two-feet area. The UDO requires a minimum of five foot for a perimeter landscape yard, so it did not meet the UDO requirements, and there's no way that shrubs could be maintained or survive in a two-foot strip to provide any kind of buffer between that drive and the pedestrians. And so, as a result of some of our concerns and our official direction to not approve this site plan, we did meet with the developer and the design team there here, if you have any questions of them, and we had a very productive meeting with them at this point, and a revised site plan has been submitted to us. It is not a huge change, but it is a change, where they are now providing at least five feet between the sidewalk and the curb of the drive aisle. And if you're familiar with what's been happening out there at South Park Village, right across Village Walkway from this site, a little bit catty corner, is the new optometry that's right next to the Fiesta Mexicana, and they have constructed between the two buildings a brick column and wrought iron fence to create sort of a plaza look between the two buildings. What they are committing to doing is not only having the landscaping through here, but also constructing a fence detail with brick columns and wrought iron fence to mimic what was done at the optometry office, to provide another barrier and, something to provide that sense of place and a little bit of security for pedestrians in this area from that driveway.
Gina, how far apart are those columns roughly, again?
The details for that have not yet been fully vetted, they want to make sure that you have some sense of comfort, and then they'll work with us to get that detail from the optometry office and determine appropriate height for the fence and the columns.
Do we have a limitation in terms of fence, that would be classes fencing, so I'm assuming, is there a limitation on how high that can be, or a maximum it can be, is it five feet, six feet, four feet?
There is, I think in commercial, it might be six feet, but we wouldn't even, we would recommend about a four foot, so nowhere near the maximum height, right.
As high as it was in the max.
Right, yeah, no, it would not be, we wouldn't recommend anything too tall, that would then be out of proportion as well for the pedestrian.
Okay.
So.
Nope, we'll go back.
Did they move the driveway back? Is that how they got the five feet, or how did they accomplish the five feet that they're?
Did they narrow the driveway?
Sure, it's a little tighter radius, they had some room to play, whoops, let me go back. So, you can see here, it's a little bit hard, the screen stretches the drawings on here, so you can see where this is a big square.
It's tighter.
It's just slightly tighter.
It's tighter, yeah.
Okay.
Whoops, wrong way, there you go. So, you can see where this is big square, there you go. And then, more rectangular shaped.
Is there, can you go back to the site plan schematic? That one there?
Yeah.
Is there a reason why they couldn't turn the building around and have the cars stacked at the back and come out that way? Or is, it seems.
There was a discussion about the headlights shining out of the car wash, shining into the buildings across the way, was that part of the discussion there?
Well, originally, and what we were requesting, and it was our understanding that it would not, that they couldn't get it to work, was we wanted to see the car wash building here, sideways here, so they would come in, pull in, go through, come out, so you get a long building facade, a long Village Walk, which was the ultimate goal for that shopping center, was to have the storefronts right up on that setback line. And so, we were told that that was not feasible, and that they had to have a car wash to make the project work. And so, what we also like to try to do is, we like to evaluate when a car is sitting in a car wash at nighttime, and they keep their lights on, and its impact on adjacent roadways. And so, the way this site is designed and its distance from GB Alfred Highway, we feel it's better to have a car sitting here with its light shining this way, rather than a car here shining and blinding vehicles in this area, or pedestrians.
Okay.
That answer.
Well, yeah, I just.
Was that what you were thinking, putting the building here?
Having been at the gas station out there, the Eagles, two days ago, and going through their car wash there, where the, it just seemed more compact, and the cars were hidden behind the building, anyway.
Different site.
Yeah, I know, it's a different site, but it's, anyway.
Okay. Other questions at this point? Continue on, please.
And so, the other area of concern that staff had was in regards to the request to reduce the amount of glazing that they were providing on the facades of both the convenience store or gas station building, as well as the car wash. Currently, our regulations require the two most visible sides of a building, or used sides, are the two sides that have to provide forty percent minimum of glazing. And so, for this site, the main, see store, would be the rear elevation, which is what faces Village Walk Drive, and then the front elevation, what faces the pumps, and all of that. And so, the two facades are pretty much a mirror of each other, where, this is the Village Walk Drive facade, and this was where we ended up our final plan submitted from them, which, I don't recall the percentages, it's about twenty percent, twenty-seven percent glazing, and they were showing two faux brick window areas, and those are areas that have offices, restrooms, freezers, things that can't have a window that sees into the building.
Right.
But what we did come up with, and they have resubmitted since our meeting with them, a revised elevation where they would use the black spandrel glass. This is very similar to where we ended up with the sheets, where we're trying to get away from all the waivers and trying to get the glass, which was the original intent of the ordinance when we adopted that. And so, then, the same thing occurred on the side that faces the pumps or the GB Alfred elevation of the building, where the final set of drawings were, once again, the faux brick windows, and they are proposing to revise those with the black spandrel glass. Then, the third facade was the east facade, the facade of the car wash that faces Dairy Queen, and if you recall back, and I should have included it there, to this elevation, this is this elevation here, which is very visible, this facade, and all the drawings are included in your packet, I don't have it here, does show spandrel glass, so you don't actually see into the car wash, but it is glass. This side, as you can see, they were showing the faux brick, and they have now also submitted revised drawings, committing to do the glass also on the east facade. And so.
You're saying the glass is now not an issue, that part of it has been through their resubmit, that part is, so we're more concerned about, we're left with the car wash as the concern?
With the car wash design and the drive, you know, we're happy to see the setback further for the drive, as well as the fence and the columns to provide that sense of With that, there is a modified or additional condition that if you guys do consider approving the site plan, would be to add clarification, now that we've seen this landscape plan, that they do need to come back and work with Department of Planning and Zoning to finalize the details for that fence, and making that clear in the. to finalize the details for that fence and making that clear in the action, should you approve it. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Also, the applicants and the owner is here, if you want to hear from them.
Yes, we'd love to hear from them.
Ask some questions for the applicant?
Just curiosity more than any, why the building, why the car wash can't fit sideways? Just looking at, you know, I'm visual and everything, so I'm just trying to.
Understand the dimensions of it.
Okay, let me pull up that slide here for them.
Sure, go on. Whoever wants to speak out.
Give me a logical reason why it won't work.
Right.
That's the CPA, give me a logical.
And if you would, like we did once before, name and address, please.
Don Batte, forty-three oh nine Glen Arbor Drive, Apex, North Carolina. The main reason why putting the car wash along here is just the radius coming in and out of the car wash. We don't have enough room with the building size here to put the car wash here and still be able to make this turn and make the exit turn as well.
Even with the narrower driveway that you're going to come back, you've agreed to do?
Yes, what we did, I did not change these, the radius here or here. What I basically did is I took this whole building and this whole drive, basically from here, and shifted everything back to get the additional area here. So I could not, I really am tied with the radiuses here, the interior radius, here and here. And as you see, I'm actually bubbling this out to get a little more room to make that turn. Yes, because I have to have at least one car stacking on the exit. So even this is kind of tight.
When you moved it back, was it what, three feet, do you remember?
It was right at four, five feet, as far as the distance exit now.
No, no, the original plan, and then you said you moved it back, so I'm assuming you moved back from something.
Yes, so what I did is I moved it from its previous location, which was like two point one feet from the sidewalk, and moved it back three feet.
That's what I'm saying, yeah, okay. Thank you. Other questions of the applicant?
I mean, it was, I was hoping to see it kind of like the other Eagles where the car wash is right next to the gas station, it's kind of fits in nicely, but there's no way. Because this is two, almost two separate buildings on that spot, so.
And we actually went to the Board of Adjustment to get approval. I don't know if y'all remember, but there, for these particular lots along Village Walk Drive, there was a minimum and maximum building setback. And for that, we actually just, we amended that statement to say the main building or the primary building of the site.
That was actually done through you all with the master plan amendment.
Oh, yeah, that's right. So that was the master plan amendment that we did. So that we could turn that building and shift it back.
Other questions or comments?
Good? What is in that open area where they're doing the turner turns? Right there?
Here?
Yeah.
Yes, that's going to be landscape. This is actually an oil-water separator for the car wash. That'll be underground. That'll be underground.
Underground, okay.
Yep. So this is all landscaping. Nice big old tree right there.
Yep. Two-inch club, nice big old tree.
Yeah. Anything else? Any ones? Good?
I'm fine.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gina, kind of elaborate on the staff recommendations, if you would, at some point, maybe it's premature, I don't know.
With the changes and having met with the developers and seeing these changes, staff feels that clearly the waivers are no longer needed because they're now meeting the forty percent, as long as you're comfortable with the glazing as opposed to the faux windows. And in regards to the driveway, with the additional three feet and the construction of the fence with the brick columns, those will be substantial and I think would give pedestrians a little bit more comfort in that area, so I think we're comfortable with those changes.
And the red, is the, what you asked to be included in the revised motion, is that correct?
Correct, because that was not in your package.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none.
I'll make the motion to approve Development Plan fifteen dash D P oh one as stated on the screen.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. You did say aye.
I said yes.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you for coming, gentlemen.
Thanks for the changes.
Item seven, seeing a new business, S B three six nine Sales Tax Fairness Act. Mr. Simmons?
Yes, sir, hello.
Hello.
At the last meeting, when the budget was submitted to the town council, there was some discussion about, I suppose what would be the number one concern as it relates to the budget, and that is potential changes that are being discussed at the general assembly level with how sales tax is allocated. I think the media even picked up on that message and it was in the newspaper and that was really, we want to make the public more aware of our concern. It's a concern, I think, that's being shared by municipalities across the state.
It is.
Following that meeting, I think there was some discussion about having a resolution stating the town's position as it relates not only to the sales tax bills that are being considered, but also a number of other potential bills. After discussion with the town clerk, I think we decided to refine that down to just this one single issue. And that's what you have before you tonight. The details really haven't changed. My understanding is the status of this bill hasn't changed a lot in the last couple weeks. My understanding is that there is strong support for Senate Bill three sixty-nine, but there, within the Senate, there is, my understanding, not strong support on the other side, on the House side. And the governor has also spoken publicly about concerns about the bill as well. So everyone's taking a position. So I think it's a good idea for the town of Holly Springs to take a position as well. And that's what you're being asked to do tonight, if you would like, to direct staff to send a letter to our representatives stating what our position is and what our concerns are. We have gotten some communication back from my Senator Behringer. And she is, she wants to hear from us. So I think that would, she's always been very supportive of municipalities and she wants to understand what our concerns are, actually predating when she took office, so she's always been really consistent in that issue. So, you know, that would be part of this process. We can get this letter, we can certainly share that with her in detail. But we also have a number of other delegates in Wake County. I understand there are twenty-three delegates in the General Assembly whose districts either lie entirely within Wake County or partially in Wake County. So if we can make the strong case to them about how damaging this bill could be, not only the Holly Springs, but other Wake County municipalities, hopefully they won't support the bill. I understand there's a couple compromise bills also that aren't maybe as draconian as three sixty-nine. Oh, yes, but I think we support the current policy, which has been, you know, been in existence for years. Yeah, and we budget, you know, budgeting is a, you know, we submit a budget on an annual basis, it's a planning instrument. And when the state starts changing or considering changing the rules, our ability to plan and be responsible from a fiscal standpoint is really compromised. And it's certainly a concern and we want to make sure that's articulated to our residents, to our citizens. So we're urging our residents also who, if you have a contact in the legislature, educate yourself on this bill, educate yourself on the implications associated with it, and communicate, you know, your thoughts and concerns to your legislators as well. But what the town is asking for, what staff is asking for, is for direction on whether or not to take some type of official action or communication.
Just, you're on camera there, can you explain?
What the bill is?
Well, not so much the bill, but what is the implications for the town of Holly Springs as far as our sales tax? What we get now and how much we would have to raise taxes to offset that loss of sales tax for the town?
Okay, we've been provided projections from the North Carolina League of Municipalities. And the projection in fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, it would result in a shortfall to the town of Holly Springs and its sales tax distribution of one point six million dollars. Now, when you equate that to, how would the town, if we lost that much revenue, how would we recoup that? We would have to raise taxes based on our existing tax base today. We'd have to raise taxes by between four and five cent. Right now, our tax rate is forty-three point five cent. That, we're recommending no change in our budget, which assumes that there will be no change in the sales tax. But if that change did occur, we would be faced with either dramatically cutting services or trying to make up that shortfall in revenue. And it would be my recommendation that we would look at making up that revenue loss. So that's it, it's pretty straightforward at this point.
It's over a five percent drop based on the thirty-one million dollar current budget that we've got proposed for next year. It's over five percent, that one point six million to that. So that's a significant amount of expenses that I don't know that we could find to cut that. So to offset that, you would conceivably be looking at some sort of tax increase because I don't think expenses, cutting expenses will get it.
And I don't think that's what our residents, we've become accustomed to. I think we pride ourselves on providing a high level of service to our citizens, to our residents. And I don't mean to overstate this issue. I mean, this bill may go nowhere, there may be no further action. But when this type of legislation is being considered, the implications need to be clearly understood. This impacts us on a local level. And that is why we felt like it was important to get before you and to have some discussion, similar to the C O N statement.
I think that, well, first of all, Jenny Meisel did talk to Senator Tamara Behringer today, was it today, Jenny? And her requests from the council is whether she should vote against everything or try to get the best deal, which is always part of the game. She outlined three plans that are proposed and have pros and cons, and she would like your feedback from our fiscal perspective. My thought would be this. Assuming we all agree that we need to do this, that we hand carry the letter or resolution to the legislature, make sure she gets the first copy, and then walk around a little bit to some of our friends, pop off that, and then also make sure that every mayor in Wake County gets the same resolution that we just did, because I think they're going to be doing it too, for even a, perhaps a more important reason than us. Right now, there's probably four or five towns, cities, they're going to have to raise taxes anyway. As far as maybe, as an example, carry, I think, is going to have to go up three cents. Now, you add this to that, and they may be in a five or six cent era higher net, that's disaster. That's disaster for them, so I'll be happy to do that or have help doing it.
The comment here was that Tamara Behringer's got three plans that have been proposed that have pros and cons. Have we, do we have those to look at?
Haven't seen those specific bills, not yet.
I'd love to talk to her and say, you know, give her, you know, my thoughts about it, but, you know, I'd like to know what those other alternatives are.
Yeah, my concern is it's such a slippery slope when we talk about lesser of two or lesser of three evils when not changing the policy at all. Because there's always a concern about an amendment or something being slipped in somewhere in the process. So that would be part of our discussion with her, would be to recommend no change.
Distribution has worked well for these many, many years and it's, you know, changing it now is not a good thing. So, I mean, I was just curious what her other plans were.
I don't think we've seen that yet. I'm sure we could get that information very quickly.
Love to see it, because I'd love to have a conversation with her.
What it leaves us hanging is every municipality in the state right now is preparing their budget. And everybody is in the same limbo that we are, as far as, do we plan on the sales tax being there or we don't? And if we don't, we have to make our plans because July first, we have to have a budget in place that accounts for that loss if it's there. So it really leaves us hanging, not having them made a decision whether they're going to go forward with this. So the more we can get them to say, no, this is not what we want and that they should leave things alone, I think that's what we need to do.
Okay. In the event that this motion passes, and I have a feeling it will, perhaps on our website, we could put some key points that we would want residents to raise, as well as all the appropriate emails.
Exactly, contact information.
Because if you're asking someone to start from scratch and try to figure it all out, they might not put that off. But if we have some key points right there that they can directly reference and everything is right there, I think we'll get a much better response to this.
And how it's written here is pretty, is pretty good, basically telling people that you're taking a locally levied sales tax with state sales tax and it'll be distributed, our sales tax, would go from where we usually get it, be distributed elsewhere. So we break it down in layman's terms and let people know how truly this will be determined.
You know, when I mentioned that slippery slope, if the sales tax formula is changed just to where it becomes part of the annual state appropriation process, then when the state's trying to balance its budget in years in the future and they're looking at a budget shortfall, they're going to look after their needs and we're going to be a lower priority. So that could result in some cuts in sales tax. Right now, particularly the locally levied portion of the Wake County sales tax is outside of that budget. It's not included. But if this bill is, yes, sir, if that bill is passed, then it's all under state appropriation. So, yeah, there's concern on a number of levels, and I think the suggestion that Councilman Dixon makes about those talking points or bullet points, just that's one of those features. We don't need a sales tax formula in any form that becomes part of the annual state appropriation process. That's problematic. That's a battle we have to fight every year then.
And that statement right there pretty much said it in a very clear and concise manner. And that, you know, I would definitely take that statement and put that because it was clear.
Is there a way, and I don't know how it could appropriately be done, we have the Facebook page and we have Twitter. Is there a way we could put something on Facebook that lets people know the impact that this has as far as our future? I don't know how you would.
Tamara, you could, yes.
Yes, I think we could, but I think, go ahead. Yes, I would think first we'd want something on the website with the bulk of the information and then share it on Facebook.
Link it, we have a link too.
And direct them.
And the notify me, I think, is a more direct message to our residents who've actually subscribed to it. And a hundred percent of them get that message as opposed to a percentage getting the Facebook. So I think both could be in order.
That'd be great.
Yeah, let's try it out, see if it'll fly.
And we can help people get started with their letters or their phone calls or emails or however, how it is that they want to.
Who to send it to, the address, et cetera.
Sir?
Who to send it to, the addresses and all that kind of stuff, because a lot of people don't know. And the last warning would be that if they hear what I've heard, that very high up in the government, whatever the municipalities lose, we're going to make it up for them. I'm not going to mention his name. That isn't happening. And I feel a lot of empathy, not only for our own town, but if you go to Raleigh and look at the numbers there. look at the numbers there, and Cary in particular, those two, but Raleigh in particular, I don't know how they're going to do it. I don't know how they're going to do it. They're talking maybe big time tax increase. It's a shame. But there isn't a magic wand that says, if you lose $2 million in Holly Springs, we'll take care of you. Who is, why, how? So it isn't going to happen.
Right, and I think you may be referring to the recent repeal and the privilege license ability to charge privileged license. That did not impact Holly Springs to, in great measure.
Correct.
It did impact us, but certainly not to the level that it did in Raleigh and Cary. And I understand part of that increase that you brought up in Cary is due to some additional debt that they were taking on, but I do think one penny of it was due to the repeal of that privilege license tax.
Yes, two cents and one cent, and one cent was, as you pointed out, was the appeal.
Correct, and I do want to just state for, just want to clarify, I'm not suggesting, and I don't think any of us are suggesting, that the delegates in our Wake County delegation have went on record as supporting this legislation. All we're sharing with them is how important it is that they oppose this legislation.
Great.
So I don't, I'm not, I don't think we, I don't think any of them went on record as advocating or supporting this change.
Anything else?
I like it.
You like it?
Yeah.
You like what we're doing? I think we should do one motion, am I correct, Jenny?
I don't remember.
We're asking for a letter directing, or, yeah.
Yeah.
Directing us to...
Go for it.
Motion to endorse letter requesting members of the Wake County delegation to oppose Senate Bill 369 in any form on the basis that it is not only, it not only impacts Holly Springs with a significant revenue loss, but it also eliminates a locally levied tax and puts city sales tax distribution under state control.
Second.
Motion made second in all favor.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion passes unanimously. All right, let's go for it. All right, item number eight, other business. I'll again quickly mention the crosswalk reminder that was talked about earlier in the day. We can't stop. WRIL is doing the anti-bullying series, and I'm happy to see that, I just wish we would get more. But Amanda Lamb has said that she would come down here and talk to us, not necessarily at this forum, but across the street at an event, and we're going to keep going on that one. We're not giving up and quitting at all. So that's probably all I wanted to learn on that. Other business?
Just, one of the things, the success of the Turtle Days at Bass Lake Park was fantastic, only I think it's outgrown its venue. The impact, the impact that it has on the whole area there as far as traffic and parking has become overburdened some for the whole area. I don't know if there's some way we can relocate that to our great facility at Sog Farm, I think, but that would facilitate all of the people that want to take part in it and keep them from being shied away from it because they've had private parking problems in the past. Right now, parking goes all the way up Salem Ridge to Lynxland, which is almost a half mile. All of the side streets, we've got parking on them, and people have problems getting in and out. They make their way down to Bass Lake Park, and then they have to try and turn around somehow to get back out, to get into Sunset Ridge to park, and they have them parked on both sides of the street. People can't get down the middle of the street. If an emergency vehicle had to get through there, it would be really, really hard. So I think we need to maybe start thinking about the location of Turtle, that successful program, but I think it's outgrown the venue that it's at right now. Just a suggestion.
Got you. One of the reasons I get this asked a lot, why haven't we done the dog park? Why haven't we done this? Why haven't we done that? When we explain that there's no water and sewer out there yet, but we're working on it and working on it hard, I think they understand that. So it's kind of the same thing with this kind of issue. Water and sewer, we got to get out there pretty quick, and once we do, then there's a lot more stuff we can do out at Sog Farm, which is unique and great. Other comments?
Yeah, I'll share for folks that might not be aware, that Holly Springs' own Carlos Redon is actually on the package of Bowman baseball carts. So he's featured right on here, so, again, making us proud.
He won his first game too, hadn't he?
He did, yes.
He won his first game of piss. We won't talk about the second one.
There's even a Lego character of him in one of the games, on video games of Carlos already, so.
Again, it's a great thing for us.
Yeah. What else?
I've got a question, and it's on a new business, and it's something more in terms of, just a follow-up and just asking if we think it's, the processes is working. We talked about Eagles tonight as part of that development plan 15-dp-01, where we went through planning and, you know, they denied the developer some of the items he wanted to change, so therefore it comes to council for us. Is, it's my understanding that planning can review plans up to 20,000 square feet, and, you know, it doesn't come before to us unless there's an issue or that we request it. Is that really the best use of, is that really the best use of resources or...
Well, we talked about that a long time ago, and I think that's how we voted. Can you correct me on that, Gina?
Right, I think what Councilman Cobb is trying to find out is, you know, should negotiations continue at a staff level before they come back to council?
That's it. Sorry, I worded it poorly. Forgive me.
I see.
And that's up to you, if you want us to continue doing additional reviews. You know, there was a request and concern addressed directly by council that didn't get addressed during the site plan review, that's why we brought it here. Got another project where, you know, does it come to you? But I haven't, I have had a request that maybe it should come to council, but there was no concern specified with the site plan.
I don't know. Is it working? I mean, is this, or, you know, like, continue on as we are, or is it a tweakable, we getting to a tweakable moment?
I think so, but I'd be happy to hear other comments.
I can understand what you're saying. There are some cases where I would have liked to have seen or been able to talk about it a little bit more, but very few, because you've done a great job on that, so.
I think somebody will look ahead and talk. Sure.
Amazing.
A lot of times too, we catch it beforehand and we can discuss it with the staff, so.
You good? Go ahead.
Are you, are you going to talk about M. Mac at all, or miniature report, or? Because I just wanted to let people know, we did have a tour, I've had a couple of tours with Parks Rec stuff, of North Main Athletic Complex. We have opening day coming up.
Yay!
A week from, Thursday?
May 28.
A week from Thursday. But one thing I want to let people know, it is sold out opening night, but there is a game, that's Saturday. The facility is fabulous, it really is, but it is a work in progress. And so when people do pull up for that opening game, they are going to still see a lot of construction. It's going to be safe, it's going to be, we're going to be able to occupy, the field will be great, the seats will be great, but it'll be a work in progress. So I just don't want people to come in and think it's going to be all, every nail in place, all shiny, everything perfect, and it is going to take a little bit more time to get it all shiny and sparkly and new. But the main parts that we need are going to be there.
And I think that's a great point, and I would like to point out that most of the work that visitors will see that is not complete is the result of the grant that we recently got, and then we just added certain features to the facility. So the work that was originally awarded in phase two is not, there may be some pieces of that that are not complete, but the vast majority of that work has been completed. So, but that is a great point, and quite honestly, that is a concern that I think we as staff level had as well. We want that first impression to really be a strong one. I think it's going to be a real positive first impression. It certainly was to me when I visited the site, you know, for the first time, particularly after that turf was put down. But I'm already looking forward to 2016 as well, because all that work will be completed at that point in time, and it's going to be a fabulous facility. It's really going to be exciting. But great point, thank you.
One of the additional comments is that this is opening day celebration. It's not necessarily, and I'm speaking for the general manager of the Salamanders, it's not necessarily the grand opening, there will be another grand opening someplace in the near future when we're a little farther along. At that point in time, then we're talking the General Lusk and the National Guard and the Apache helicopters and, never mind, but something like that.
Well, we will plan an open house for the public. This happens to be opening day for the Coastal Plain League Salamander, Salamanders. The facility open house will be certainly a town-sponsored event, and it'll be well advertised, and all of the public will certainly be welcome.
Because there are other facilities there, the soccer, the tennis, all those that people are going to want to see, it's really cool.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Other managers' report?
Yeah, I do have several dates. The most important one of which, from my perspective, is the May 27th meeting, that is our budget workshop, which you, just a friendly reminder, I believe that's on Thursday, okay? But that's at 5:30 at the Cultural Center.
Yeah.
Tomorrow morning, we have coffee chat with...
Isn't it the 27th?
That's the 20, that's a Wednesday, I'm sorry, 27th. Yeah, I'm sorry, I said Thursday. I do want you to show up. So be there on Wednesday. Though tomorrow morning in the Holoman Room, some of you have signed up for the coffee chat, that's at 8:30 with the Triangle Community Coalition.
Yep.
Okay, so we have that. And then Thursday, we have a State of the Region event, and some of you have signed up to attend that as well. That's at the Sheraton Imperial at RTP, and that is, I guess, networking and registration are from 7:00 to 7:45.
That's AM.
AM. And then, yeah, and breakfast begins at 7:45. I think the program actually begins about that time as well.
Breakfast begins.
So, and Farmer's Market this weekend, although we have Memorial Day, you know, the extended weekend this weekend, and then the following weekend on the 30th, which will be May the 30th, I believe, we have the shredathon, 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 the Farmer's Day event as well.
That's always well attended.
That is a well-attended event. And I did, while I've got the mic, so to speak, a couple meetings ago, Councilman SAC and Councilwoman Williams, I believe, had mentioned some of the directional signs as you're going into town, some of those DOT signs. My understanding is DOT, we got the message to them, they're in the process of making some signs, and they will be putting them up, so Holly Springs will be more visible as you're entering town, not just our neighbors to the north. And, you know, so Holly Springs will also be listed on some of those signs. Just wanted to give an update on that.
Thank you.
That'd be nice.
That will be nice.
That it?
Yes, sir, I believe that is it.
Counselor?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, there's a need for a brief closed session to discuss two real estate matters with you pursuant to 143318 and 1185.
Why do you always smile when you do that?
I like...
You just like to smile?
Maybe numbers.
All right.
Motion to go into closed session?
Second. On favor?